We had to disclose that during the two, that there was a potential for the developments.
As part of the scoping application that begins the process with PennDOT, the traffic engineer prepares an estimate of the number of trips that will be generated by this project, and then also looks at the proposed developments in the area of this project. And then all of that data goes into the scoping application, which is submitted to PennDOT as a package. The borough participates in the scoping process. And even though this is borough-owned land and the project is slightly unique because of that, whether it is or it isn't, the borough would participate in that process and provide feedback to PennDOT as to upcoming projects, or maybe if there was a municipal improvement project in the area that was budgeted for next year, they would let PennDOT know that. So all of that is, in fact, part of the PennDOT's decision as to whether a traffic impact study should be required.
I appreciate how they go about this where I live here, and I know with the traffic that is on there. I had a question about, so we're waiving the steep slope setback, the widening, traffic study, other things. So the sidewalks, so now if all those homes are going to be going in diagonally right there at Kirchner, being the more people, I see a lot more people, my goodness, in the last two years walking into Freedom. I've never seen the amount of people walking down Constitution, Campbell. It's unbelievable. So if we don't put in sidewalks now, what happens if PennDOT tells us housing goes in and other things that, five years or something, we have to put that in? Who is going to absorb the cost of putting those in when it was waived here?
I think that's the valid concern. However, the improvements from the other properties that would be developed would have to install curb and sidewalk. Now, if you recall with the recent church and the pavilion project, there was a note going on the plan that the borough could go back to the property owner and give them six months notice that they needed to install a curb and sidewalk. That could be done here as well. But we'd basically be forcing the borough to do it on their own property. So, yeah, that's what happens a lot when the curb and sidewalk just doesn't make sense at the time, but there might be a future use for it. So you note that on the plan that the borough reserves the right to go back and say, all right, we have additional development, we have some pedestrian movement concerns along that property. We're asking that in the next six months, you install curb and sidewalk along the previously developed. Again, that's the only, as Josh said, it's a unique situation here because it's borough and property. But any property not owned by the borough that would be developed in the vicinity would be under the same guidelines under the subdivision and development plan for subdivision, or for curb and sidewalk.
And with all of these homes coming in so close there, was there a study done that our sewer plant can handle this?
Really, it's our project specific? Yes, the borough maintains records of the available sewage capacity. That lists, that lists the projects that are proposed, all of the existing uses. It's called a Chapter 94 report. That report breaks down very, line by line, the number of EDUs that are allocated to the entire Truville plant. And the three EDUs that we've asked for for this project would be budgeted into that overall capacity. And at this point, from the information that's been provided to us, there is no capacity issue related to our project.
So I understand you say if they're allocated, they're there. Let's just say there's 50 allocated somewhere, we want to use them. They guarantee there's going to be space at that plant just because they're allocated to you?
They're not specifically allocated to us at this point in time. Once the project comes online and is constructed, that usage would be measured and metered at the plant, like it is already for all of the cumulative uses that come to the plant. The water that flows in and out of the plant is measured. And there are detailed records of what those flows are.
And we will utilize.
Well, that's my concern, like this, this month, it's over 2 million gallons are missing, so it's those sort of things.
You have to understand how partial wind works when you're measuring the velocity and the amount of gallons per minute in wastewater treatment by facility. But that's, we're not on that topic at this point.
I'm just, you know, bringing up concerns.
You wouldn't even have to go that far. The meter, the water, the site's going to be metered, right, through the water.
Right, that's what we utilize for EDUs.
Unless they're using, you know, some water on site for washing, sprinkling, or something else, it's going to go through the meter, you know, how many, 300, right now, 350 gallons represent an EDU. So you could take the meter, divide by 350, and it'll tell you how many EDUs to have. I mean, it's a lot more accurate than relying on metering the treatment plant.
Right, that's the same report that we utilize to calculate EDUs as part of the sewage improvement.
Is there lighting going up that drive?
Uh, yeah.
Going up the drive, no, there is not. And there is no source.
It's black dark, and that just seems so narrow.
It's kind of black and dark when they leave from the soccer field still.
True, but if you're going to have people drinking, you know, try the bar, and then coming down that narrow, you know, I mean, it's a concern, it's a liability concern.
Well, they come out of my parking lot into a, right now, into a road that don't even take one thing, and it's a two-way road, so you have the same thing, and you've got kinds of traffic there.
You mean Main Street?
Huh?
You mean Main Street, or?
No, I'm talking about the street, I don't even know what the name of it is. The alley, the alley behind the VFW.
The alley in front of.
There's one behind us, there's one alongside us.
I don't know if that's the same volume, but, yeah.
Which alley? It's, but yeah, I don't foresee, I mean, we have responsible people there that don't allow it. I'm always going to drive out of the post now into Main Street or anyplace else, so.
Josh, I, go ahead.
Yeah, is there just a question for me? What, is there a reason that grinder pump is located so far from the building? I mean, if you had it closer, you wouldn't have to lay pipe and grade it, just fuck it all?
Yeah, the building sits up high, it actually drains down by gravity to the grinder pump's location, and then pumps back up to the main where it ties in. So it was really just an elevation issue, we put it at a low point.
Doesn't really matter that.
Either way, the pipes got to get down there, it's just whether it's a four chain or a gravity line. So I recall Denny, and I don't look, but I think it's a six-inch line running down to the grinder pump, and then a inch and a half or a quarter coming out.
Can you list those comments that you addressed that you were wanting to write at the beginning again? I think you started at 30.
With the numbers?
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
30, 67, 68, 69, 90, and 93.
72?
72 was the NPS.
Yeah, okay.
Did I catch them all from the planning commission meeting?
Yeah, I was just going through Warehouse's report that they provided to council for actually later on in the agenda, and just checking off those numbers. And I think these were discussed at the planning commission.
Right, yeah, the ones that I didn't list, maybe that Warehouse had as standing were ones that we discussed in detail, the planning commission. And the planning commission recommendation was the ones that I just mentioned to you.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
I had a question. All my life, things were like that, and it's been a woods. And I didn't know who owned it, and didn't really care. But how was it zoned? I mean, has it always been borough property, and how was it zoned?
It was, it was zoned, they had to apply for a special exception. Went through zoning, zoning approved it, planning approved it.
It's a rural residential, and a club use is permitted by special exception. And that was issued actually back in 2021 already, it's been that long, so.
Do you have any other questions? Again, just wanted to clarify that the additional comments that Warehouse has listed outstanding, so basically marked as complete for the planning commission?
The planning commission, we went through these, and some were complete, and some were the planning commission thought or recommended that the information that was provided already satisfied the requirement. So for example, one of the comments was that a copy of the lease agreement between the borough and the VFW be provided to the borough. And we already have that. So as one, as one example, that comment, the planning commission thought was already addressed, and even though it was part of his outstanding on the letter.
And you did add dumpster enclosure detail?
Correct, that was actually on the plan and just was not seen.
Yep, okay. Sorry, one more, the vehicle, turn to the template.
Also on the plan, it's.
Yeah, just trying to make sure.
Sheet, sheet TT 1.0. So, got it right here.
Any other counsel, if they have more questions?
Are there any other questions that entertain a motion to approve?
I'm going to move.
Any other discussion?
Sorry?
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, yeah. I have to stand, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. All in favor?
I'll second.
Oh, he made the motion.
All right, then I'll make the motion.
And then I'll second.
Okay, it's true.
All in favor?
And I'm standing.
You're standing, yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed?
No.
You vote as aye?
Me, that's for no.
I'm sorry?
I didn't hear all the ayes, that's why.
Raise your hand if you vote aye, please. Motion carries.
Thank you for your time this evening, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Oh, okay, that was the plan, you have to do each waiver. Do each waivers separately. Yeah, that was what we planned, I think. Each, each waiver.
Okay.
Something about balls in there, court.
One at a time?
No.
Okay. Would entertain a motion to waive the traffic impact study?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed?
No.
Motion carries.
Excuse the second.
It's for no.
For no.
Denny, yeah? Motion to waive the number of vehicle access drives from two to one?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed?
No.
Motion carries. Motion to waive the roadway widening?
This is just specifically in terms of Constitution, correct?
Correct, yes.
Because you are already widening.
We're already doing it.
Right.
Okay, I'll just make sure. I'll make that motion for waiving the roadway widening on Constitution.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed?
No.
Motion carries. Installation, waiver to waive the installation of concrete sidewalk?
Go move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed?
No.
Motion carries. Waiver of installation of concrete curbing?
Go move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed?
No.
Motion carries. Waiver of the steep slope setback?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed?
No.
Motion carries.
Thank you, sorry.
Thank you.
I'm exhausted. Okay, consider reapproval of the land development plan for the new Freedom Business Park Solar Array.
So again, we're back to these reapprovals, and that's the problem with approving contingent plans. The last contingency was based on the applicant obtaining stormwater approval based on the engineer's recommendation. They have since done that, however, the 90 days has elapsed for recording at the courthouse, so that requires reapproval for the plan to be reported. The applicant has provided updated stormwater drawings, they have provided the borough with a stormwater operation maintenance agreement, and they have since purchased the property. So all of this was already approved, it's just a reapproval to put the date on the plan so it can be reported at the courthouse. Again, there would need to be an approval of the plan, and then approval of the one waiver.
This was done previously, so.
This was already approved previously.
Entertain a motion to reapprove the land development plan for the business park Solar Array. Well, Solar Array.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry? Posed?
The environmental site assessment was?
Basically just a waiver, because it really doesn't apply in this case, they're not. Well, they're disturbing land, but it doesn't have any merit at this point.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed? I vote as aye. Phase one environmental site assessment waiver? A motion?
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
All in favor? Posed? Okay, floor sweep or scrubber proposal?
Right, we were asked to put together a price for a floor cleaner to handle the auditorium at the community center. Additionally, in this case, we need to be able to utilize this public works facility. So we reached out to Fortech, who's familiar with Co-Stars and pricing and everything, obviously familiar with the need that existed there at the community center. So on, this is actually the fifth page in here, there's a proposal for basically a 48-month lease that includes the lease and all labor and any maintenance that would be provided for a month. We did demo the unit at the community center, did clean the floor, seemed to remove any issues with, that we've had in the past with creating a slippery surface. Actually, it was a little abrasive to the surface to provide a bit of texture. We were asked to provide a proposal and see what it costs to have to go out there.
This, I do have a few questions, but what type of pads or brush is under there? Like, is it very coarse?
Uh, no, no, it wasn't very coarse, it was just almost like a buffing pad.
Okay, so we don't think it's any kind of issue with lines for volleyball?
No, we actually ran it over lines multiple times, and did not pull any of the.
Not even, not even just once or twice, I mean, after years, or anything like that? Do you think that would be an issue? Do you think it would be all right?
No, I think, I mean, other than normal, having put the lines down normally, no. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I had a question. The, I did find on here that the charter is included in the unit, it's not like a standalone, like a wall mount unit type thing. Does that require any additional electrical hookups, or is it just a standard 110 outlet?
Yep.
Is there already outlets in that room?
Yeah, yeah, we did, it goes through the door, we made sure of that, yeah.
Hey, I don't know what unit they brought up, what like port is actually on there? If, I think I've seen my questions that have helped with that.
What's the cleaning time to do the room?
Uh, it actually, if you full speed, it's pretty fast, you're moving pretty quick.
Who's going to operate public works?
It would be, uh, it would be the cleaning lady that we would have her do that maybe once a week. And then if we did have an issue where we had a.
Event?
Event that there were numerous spills, rather than wet mopping, this is going to do a much better job.
Quicker.
Quicker, yeah, and to wet mop the entire room takes.
And then you're just pushing dirty water around.
Yeah.
We have similar units to this at work, and they make quick work of.
How long did they estimate that it would take to do that? An hour?
I don't even think it would take an hour.
Not really?
Yeah.
You said it could be used somewhere else?
Yeah, we can use it as public works garage, too. They actually brought it down to public works garage after the demonstration at the community center, and even, you know, stains and cleaning this form of concrete, it was able to remove the public works. So obviously, it's not something that you're going to be using down there once a week, or even once a month, once or twice a year, but you have the ability if needed to clean things up.
Do the floors in the senior section?
They do.
They do?
Yes.
Comes down?
Yeah, they're responsible.
How, how does it transport it from one place to the other?
Just a trailer.
Trailer, area house?
Yep.
So does the cost go down if we use it less hours? Says this is based on 300 hours a year, and we just said it's going, we were going to be using this about 52 hours a year. So round it up and even say 100 hours a year, if you do it more than once a week on some occasions, or whatever?
Yeah, I mean, we can go back to him, and we can ask for a lower. I have a feeling that's already probably their base rate, but it's worth an ask, sure.
Well, with this, we're already paying the cleaning lady nearly 18,000 a year to clean the community center. And when you add this in, the cost of this, possibly 5,300, that doesn't even cover any of the own maintenance that's outside the contract. That brings that up to over $23,000 a year, which I think is quite lopsided at just wanting to throw more money at this. It's been referenced money pit by some here, and. So I just, I don't believe this is the answer, throwing more money at it, at this issue when you're looking to put in a private club right down the road that's going to rent out their space to residents, which people that rent the community center, that could be going down, and you're spending over $23,000 to clean it. The fact that, you know, that we talked about that hasn't been.
You mean what?
Several times Public Works, it was, this council decided Public Works was going to go up there and check that community center, and Mop did need it, and that hasn't been followed yet.
And that's not true.
Absolutely it is.
Yeah, me and the council meeting.
Yeah, but that don't take. But wait a second, you're talking about two things. You're talking about having Public Works check it after a rental if there were issues, and you're talking about the normal cleaning of the facility. So you don't confuse the two, that, and I agree, and keep in mind, I was asked to provide a proposal, that's what this is. It's up to council to make that determination and decide what you want to do.
At one point, you were supposed to check it every morning, and then that started happening, and then fell away, and then came around again.
There's rentals, but rentals don't happen every morning.
Well, not just other rentals, you have other, you know, you have people that are in there in the sports in the evening, and all kinds of things, but it just seems to be an ongoing, never put to bed issue, that just keeps just coming back and back, and we just talk about it, it goes like pickleball. The community center, it's just, it's never ending, and I do not believe that this is the answer to throw more money, especially when the budget is lopsided as it is.
Does the cleaning lady get paid by the hour?
$50 an hour.
Okay, so does she wet mop that floor when she comes in on Thursday with thirsty and something?
Not every, not every time, no.
So I'm thinking if it would save her, it probably takes her two and a half hours to mop, wet mop that and do a decent job, so it's going to knock off an hour and a half anyway. So right there's 50 bucks, I mean, do you see this as a savings?
And she's going to be, is it a savings?
No, I bet.
But if she's going to be working this, and she's not insured and bonded right, so if she gets injured working this machine, then what happens?
That's why we need our coverage.
Oh, we have coverage for her?
Even if you were under normal policy, you'd have that. The fact that she's being paid, one day, a volunteer would be covered. It'd be no difference if you had someone in there volunteering for her.
If you saved an hour a week, it would be $2,600, at $50 an hour. My concern, too, is that you have people playing, and one of the reasons that cleanliness has become such an important issue is because people who play pickleball in there, if there's any schmutz on the floor at all, they slide.
Or they stop.
No, or they stop, if there's water on the floor, then they stop.
To be clear, she gets paid 150 a pop, whether she's there two hours or three hours, $150 every time she comes out. So it's not cutting down the time, you're going to get charged 150 when she comes out regardless of how long she's there.
Well, it needs to be a better way to be able to clean that floor.
So instead of the committee looking at. So instead of the committee looking at a floor scrubber option, why doesn't the committee look at options for cleaning the community center and come up with a suggestion to council?
We have, public works, my goodness, if they have ability to say no...
Why don't we send a formal proposal to council?
Absolutely, this council, I can bring that back for you, councils give the direction, absolutely.
You're skewering the lines again.
No, 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 no.
So, so this council directed that public works was gonna clean the entire community center?
I didn't say clean the entire...
That's what I'm talking about.
Public works was gonna go up there, I said public works should do it. If they can take so much comp time, there's flubs somewhere, so I don't understand why the public works cannot clean.
So they can take so much comp time, what is that supposed to mean?
Because if they have a job that they do here in the borough, and then they're allowed to take comp time, who's doing their job while they're on comp time?
So our employees aren't entitled to time off?
I'm asking you, have you ever did work studies, on time studies, on just what they do?
Absolutely, that's part of the performance evaluation.
Okay, can I see the, can I, can I see the, the time study that's done on what the public works do to see if it's feasible that they're able to clean the community center?
So it kinda sounds to me that you wanna go on record and say you don't have a need for public works?
What does that come from? No, we do have a need, we need our community center cleaned. We need our community center cleaned, ever, spending over twenty-three thousand dollars a year, and we hear a lot from rec that it doesn't happen, it's been getting better lately.
So you want to micromanage their time?
I was sent up here by the people to conduct business for the people and to run this borough efficiently, I'm giving out ideas that are continuously shot down, so...
Have you made a motion?
Yeah, I made a motion to do that before, and I believe all of you said no.
So it wasn't the direction of council that...
It was the direction of council that you would go check that community center every morning, and that just kinda fell away, and then it was brought up another time because we talked about it all the time.
Why would it be every morning when there's not rentals in there? Why, why would you need to go in there every morning?
Who knows, who goes in there, so many people are allowed to get, I don't know, it was you were going to go check it.
I think that was after, after events.
You were going, there's somebody in there every day, there's somebody in there every day.
Volleyballs in there every day, and...
Volleyball, other things are in there, cross, whatever, but then from there, it went to public works, public works is gonna go check it, and if it needed to be mopped, they were gonna mop it. So it's been a plethora of things, I could bring a list if you want me to come back next time, it has been talked about, but it's a repetitive issue that just keeps coming up, is what I'm stating.
I just know it's not fair anymore to ask Rich to come in an hour, hour and a half early and have to wet mop that, that floor. And I think this is a much better solution. If it is, he can get it done and nothing flat, he'd be allowed to use it, right? But is there a reason?
Oh, my goodness. Liability? People using this machine?
Oh, that's what I'm asking, do a TV cover, or does it have to be public works, or the cleaning lady? Does that, I don't know, is it a volunteer, is he covered under our insurance? So you got Friday, Friday nights sometimes or something, Saturdays, weddings and all that, and they still play, you know, volleyball Sunday sometime, I don't know what the time is. And Saturday mornings, and then they yell that when they're not out of there. Why don't we table this and see if you can talk to them about if we use it less hours? You're probably right about the minimum, but...
That's fine, but there needs to be a motion of council on how the cleaning of that equipment is going to work in the future, so that we're not going back to this, and it's clear.
The direction my council was clear before.
I sent pictures of riders, you know, from Amazon to you, that I just felt that this would, I agree, this would be better, the maintenance, you never know, how many people play the extended maintenance on their car, you know, it's...
The extended maintenance on cameras in the park that haven't been utilized?
That, that rec is asking for another one.
I'm not saying we can't put another one, I'm just saying we've rushed that.
Okay, um...
If they're not used, that's somebody's fault.
We just haven't access to them. When I asked a couple months ago, there wasn't one case that was any meaningful information gathered from them.
What can I say, we have complaints that we're going to the burb manager about cars parked on the sidewalk, and one person gets nailed, and the other person that he originally complained about didn't, never got anything. All right, we're all, we're all, we're all over the place, I think, I think it's...
We brought it up at the last council?
Right, we got a letter, it's the North Constitution. No, that was from somebody else, right? Let's wait till we get there, sorry. Good idea, okay, so the, what we're talking about is cleaning, well, we've authorized the cleaning ladies, so that's, that's who is supposed to be doing the cleaning, that would be the direction from council by definition. Checking, I, it was, I was, anyone can jump in, correct me if I'm wrong, but the direction that I understood from council was that we were going, somebody from public works was of course, some, the manager's decimated representative, was going to check after each use of the community center to make sure that the people had properly cleaned, and if not, we were gonna withhold their security deposit. Those were the last words I remember.
And it's used daily? And it's used daily? When is that community center not used?
But they don't mind running a mop that's five feet long just to clean up dust. It's soda, it's chips, it's confetti, which we've...
So if it's used for an event, then public works is gonna check, but if volleyball was there the night before, it's not necessarily gonna get checked, that was another sporting activity just like pickleball. I, I could, I could tell you for a fact, you know, I mean, I, I live close to Veterans Park. When it rained and we had to fix the field, I drove my lawn tractor over and I fixed the field. I mean, it's not uncommon for people to have to prep a field or a room, or put lines down, or whatever, to, to make things work for themselves. So I think that the general idea was that we were going to clean weekly, have the room checked after every event, and that was, that was the extent of the cleaning.
But who was gonna clean it if they go after an event and it's filthy, dirty, and there's confetti all over the place?
Well, I, I think you had actually asked, can she come back for another cleaning?
Public works?
I mean, was that checking, if there's an issue, we have to look at it.
Right. Does that satisfy the question?
I don't think it was.
Okay, what do we need to do different?
Well, clearly there's an issue.
The Sunday night clean, I'm sorry, go ahead. The Sunday night cleaning is great, because if there's an event Sunday, she's gonna clean it up Sunday night, because she does clean Sunday evenings, right? And she cleans Thursday, but if we have an event Friday or Saturday, it leaves, because pickleball's for every day of the week at some point, you know, and it's not right for them to have to pay and come in and help clean the floors.
But let's remember, they pay seven dollars and eighty-five cents a day.
I don't care what they pay, they're paying, they're paying twenty bucks a month. Instead of going, you know, using our facilities, if they go over to the Y, they're paying forty. You know, it just, it still needs to be cleaned.
Can I ask a question, please? Is the cleaning lady not cleaning it? Are you satisfied with her performance?
I think everybody's satisfied with her performance, the problem is, is things happen in between the cleanings and...
Or who would operate the machine?
I'm sorry?
Who would operate the machine that you're considering purchasing?
She would when she's cleaning, but somebody else would have to on Saturday and Sunday after an event.
So you'd have to pay extra...
But we don't, that's the thing, we don't know who's gonna operate the machine.
We're always gonna get cleaned for eighteen thousand for the most part, why would we wanna put another five thousand dollars on top of that eighteen thousand dollars?
I agree.
It just doesn't make much sense.
Mainly because we've had an awful lot of people hurt up there during playing pickleball because of the floor and negligence of not having it cleaned.
Well, if they're falling down for not having it cleaned, who didn't check it after an event?
How do you know it wasn't because it wasn't cleaned, or they weren't wearing the right shoes?
Because I was just told that you don't need to have it checked.
Or it's the wrong surface to play on, polished concrete.
Then we shouldn't have allowed them to start, now that you've allowed them to start.
It never ends, it never...
You know, nobody complains about the surface, the place pickleball up there.
If it's checked and it's dirty, then charge the people that were there before the cleaning.
Well, we do.
That's what our plan is, yeah.
We do, we, what?
For fifty dollars an hour also...
We keep seventy-five dollars, right?
You need to put it out for bid for a new contract with a cleaning person, because that's a ridiculous hourly rate.
We don't even have a contract.
You need a contract and it needs to go out to bid. Well, it needs to go out to bid when the contract's up, because that's ridiculous.
There's no contract.
There's no contract.
It's a handshake, there's no contract.
Well, there needs to be a contractual thing, and there are many people who are licensed and insured and bonded that will clean for less than fifty dollars an hour, that's a ridiculous hourly rate.
Thank you.
I don't know if I can say we need to have that done, but could you do it for me?
And try and...
Thank you, you're appreciated.
Thank you.
All right, I wish I could give you, my mother-in-law just had her house cleaned today. It was at least fifty bucks an hour. Yeah, I know, it's very expensive to get anything cleaned. Yeah.
I, I don't know what the answer is, I thought I did.
Yeah, I, I don't know what the answer is either, I'm really at a loss, because we're, we're never going to, I think, keep everybody happy, there's...
Put it out to bid and see what you get, that's the only way that you're gonna know what's up in the community.
But the, the problem is that the pickleball people want it cleaned every day.
No, 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 they do not. No, they only want it...
Please.
They only want it...
How many times have they been here and complained that there was dirt? There was soda, they want it cleaned every day.
Yes, because of parties Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and they come in Monday morning and do a picnic.
So Monday and Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday, they're good.
Generally, yeah.
Maybe we could...
It has parties on the, on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday.
Then why does it have to be checked every day? If they're good, why does it have to be checked every day for accountability? Was the person who... Would surely have to be checked on Monday?
That wasn't my idea, I said they should be checked after an event.
Which is usually, you said Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, so it gets checked Monday morning, we're good.
Well, we know, we know when there's gonna be an event, they have to register the...
Pickleball is an event, they pay seven eighty-five a day.
And check it afterwards, and if they dirtied it, then give them the bill. As simple as that.
They don't dirty it, they clean it.
Whoever. I'm saying whoever dirties it now, it gets, gets checked after any use, I don't care if it's an event.
That's exactly what I'm saying, it doesn't have to be checked afterward, we have a member of rec council who's there and they check it. So we're, we're good there, pickleball's not making a mess, believe me.
I'm just using them because that's just...
Yeah, it's the, it's the birthday party, the wedding, the, you know, drunken sailors...
It's cleaned on Sunday night, that's what you just said, cleaned on Sunday night.
But it's not cleaned Friday or Saturday. So if it needs to be cleaned Friday or Saturday...
Something we're saying we should stop pickleball from playing on Friday or Saturday, because it's cleaned on Sunday and it's cleaned on Thursday.
No, I'm saying this would be great, because Rich will go in there, or Jim, and they'll, they'll run the darn thing over...
For five thousand three hundred dollars, I'm sure they would.
And if they're going in after a Friday night event, they're going in on Saturday, so that's overtime, okay, so now you...
No, 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 they don't get paid, they just, they, they do it, you know?
Well, no, I'm talking about facilities. If they go in on a weekend to check after an event and they have to run it, you're gonna end up paying more. So on top of the eighteen and the five and everything else...
Security deposit back.
And that security deposit...
Their cleaning deposit, that pays for the...
The hourly wage, it's an offset.
How about the cleaning lady comes in on a Friday night and a Sunday night, at least when you're having a party on a Friday night, you got one of them covered? Just saying. Thursday night and Sunday night, doesn't make sense.
I didn't, I don't know if that was her agreement, Thursday and Sunday, or...
It's the day she comes in.
It was Thursday to get ready for the weekend, Sunday, but get ready for...
That's what I thought, to get ready for the weekend.
But again...
I mean, you've got to the rental, you gotta cover, right?
But it's only... Apparently it gets returned all the time.
Well, we talked about that.
But it's not checked.
Yeah, I'm gonna get it back, all right.
I think it's gotta be signed off by somebody that's checked before it's returned.
Sure, it's not this difficult.
Well, that's what we had talked about.
Well, then we need input.
I make a motion, we table the floor scrubber, and that we put together a committee to figure out an, an actual schedule for the community center cleaning. Have a committee come?
Yeah.
Can we complain about it later now?
Complain about it, I've given you the answer, no one else can do it, so we're talking now.
You don't, you watch, I'm sorry. Is that what it was, Warren?
I have said this, I'm gonna come back with a list, I'm gonna come back with all this next month and see how many times I brought this to you, it's absolutely ridiculous.
So Dave and the mayor will be on a committee to come up with a cleaning schedule, if we need to get somebody else to clean, we'll get somebody else to clean, we may even have to get somebody who is willing to stop in to, to check on it on a Saturday, to make sure that it can be done. But you guys come up with what you think is, is appropriate, we'll table the floor scrubber with your permission, until we get the, we find out if we can get it for a reduced cost, and let's move on.
Got you.
All right, EMS study presentation.
Is that this one?
Yes, it is. Did you wanna talk, or you want...
Well, I said a lot while the guys were there, I, I, I know, you know how I feel, and you've said it about EMS and fire, I attend all, every meeting, you know, unless, I forget something happens. But I'm a member, I attend, I know honestly, the fire department is, fireside is much better off than EMS. As I said a little bit earlier, if EMS had to pay everything that they're gonna need, a new ambulance, they already paid for the chassis, to mount the chassis, their other items, I mean, I don't think people realize, do you know how much a cot costs?
A what?
Cot.
Cot?
Electric cot, electric reeves, seventy thousand dollars, it's ridiculous. They don't get reimbursed for their drugs, if anybody knows that, Medicare, Medicaid, they lose money every time they take a Medicare/Medicaid call, and they, if they had to pay tomorrow for everything that they need, including everything on the wish list, you know what the bottom line would be, how much they'd have in the bank? Zero, because they have had to take out the coffers for so many years now that it's paid, and like you heard, seventy-eight percent of, of their revenue goes towards, towards paying for... towards paying for full-time payroll. We used to have part-time, well, now we don't even have part-time, we had two part-timers there going.
Let, let me run down through the EMS study that was completed. We participated in this study, it was done by D C E D. Pretty much, everybody in the fire company and the mayor and myself both said we probably could have written this study in a couple of weeks. And it took them months and months and months to do it.
About years.
Yeah, years actually, because they had to change people a couple, three times. New Freedom Rose, Rose Fire provides seventeen hundred fifty calls for service annually. Our percentage of those calls is about eleven point two. If you stretch it, you could probably get it up to about fifteen, but really, fifteen percent of our, of the calls that Rose does is for New Freedom Borough. Glen Rock Ambulance is, John Trout has been a key member, Ed Bailey's been a key member. John Trout was gonna retire this year, he's my age, which is old. And he recertified so that he could stay working in EMS.
One day a week.
Yeah, day, yeah, one day a week. So we're hurting because if, if Glen Rock goes away or cuts back, Rose has to pick up the volume. Now, that means they get to bill as well, but again, as the mayor was saying, on a fifteen hundred dollar call, they might make six hundred dollars. Tri-Community went out of service. So we're looking at, at the equipment that they need. One of the, one of the people in the study said that we could possibly consolidate and have Glen Rock and Rose be, be one entity. Doesn't really get you anything though, you still have to pay for the ambulances and whatnot. The mayor alluded to the, the charges, the payroll. Paramedics are getting twenty-four dollars an hour.
That, that has gone up by the way.
And that has gone up, but E M Ts, advanced E M Ts are like not even seventeen dollars and E M Ts are sixteen seventy-two. So the problem with that is you could go to Rutgers and get a job and, and get that money in salary. So what we're trying to do is support Rose Ambulance. And what we asked them to do after this last meeting that they came to explain things to us a little bit is to put together what their budget is for 2024, what parts of that wish list that they're talking about are required for them to maintain through the next, through the next year. So that's, that's where we're at right now. Do you wanna add anything? Andy's been attending EMS, Kim's been attending the EMS study and I've been there.
You said we're paying E M Ts twenty-four dollars an hour?
Paramedics.
It has gone up.
But we're paying a cleaning lady fifty and she has a degree.
Exactly, if we offer them thirty, will they do, do the community center?
I'm sorry?
If we offer them thirty, can we get them to do the community center?
No, thanks, John.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I mean, that, well, that's, that's the point. I mean, you know, the paramedics are making twenty-four dollars an hour, but you could count pills at C V S and make twenty-four dollars an hour. These guys are actually going out on calls and they're risking their lives and.
But we've got somebody we're paying fifty dollars an hour to, to push a broom, that's, I think, this gentleman's point.
E M Ts are only sixteen fifty an hour.
My daughter's a paramedic, I know, and I know what the hell she went through to get her degree.
You're right. You're right, we even, we even worked out an agreement that we will pay for them to go to E M T school. I think Pat had it. We, we would pay for them and they committed for a year or two years. And at the end of that year, where their, when their time commitment was up, they're going, they're going to Wellspan, they're going to U P M C, they're going on to nursing school. We had two of them that went on to get their P A's, you know, it's a stepping stone, unfortunately.
And one of the problems I've got is that we got our in the mail for the EMS donation.
When?
Just recently. The outside says it's for the fire department, the inside says it's for EMS. And you're always staying, having two separate entities.
I didn't have anything to do with that, but I'll certainly say something.
Well, they, yeah, they already know and they are gonna, they're gonna fix that. I don't disagree with you, I mean, you know, fifty dollars for cleaning.
Yeah.
But I mean, you, you know, pretty much what we have to do is go with the least, lowest price that we can get. So that, you know, should we rebid it again? Yeah, absolutely, I have no problem with that.
When was the last time it was bid?
Sorry?
When was the last time it was bid?
What, what?
About a year ago.
Cleaning lady?
It wasn't bid out.
It wasn't, we were just.
Oh, it was a search. Services, services don't get bid, they get searched and, like, if you need an engineer, you go and you find an engineer and you look at the, look at the costs, so services are.
How was this individual found? Like, how, how did he find her?
Andy did.
From Andrew's, bring his girl, drop. That's Green Grove, he knows her from there, so he brought her here to clean here.
Well, why can't we put something out, and I'm just using this as an example, Facebook Marketplace and say, look, we're looking to get people, how much would you charge? And we need to take somebody who is licensed, bonded, insured. Because fifty dollars an hour, when you're paying your EMS, people who are saving lives, half of that, I just don't see how anybody can see the logic in it.
Yeah, I mean, keep in mind, we're not paying paramedics, but, you know, but I do agree with.
It's a principle. We're, we're worried about a budget that eighty-seven or seventy-eight percent is salaries and you're underpaying them, so my daughter, she used to work for the flight crew for the president, I know what they can make.
Yep.
Yeah.
Well, and they go to Lifeline, they go to, who knows what?
She worked for Med Star Harbor Hospital and was down in DC, so, yeah, I get it, I know.
I know, one thing you didn't mention, Glen Rock does hire U P M C, E M T or a paramedic?
It's one paramedic.
One paramedic, ninety-six hours a week in the contract, a month?
A month.
And it's a hundred and fifty thousand a year.
Ninety-six hours a week.
Oh, is it a week? Ninety-six hours a week, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Because what they do is they run twenty-four forty-eights. They, they do not go home, they stay at the fire hall twenty-four forty-eight hours.
Right, well, these, the, the rent a paramedic's doing. They only, they only work seven to five and they won't, don't work weekend.
Well, we're not in the business of hiring the E M Ts or the paramedics, I think we kinda like.
Right, yeah, we circled out of that. Anyway, so I just wanted everybody on council to know about the EMS study. And again, next Monday, Kim and I will be at the EMS meeting and hopefully we'll be able to come back the following month with something. Do you have anything?
I don't have anything that we haven't touched on already.
Okay. Managers report.
Everybody has a copy of the September twenty twenty managers report packet. Any questions on that report?
You're gonna talk about the D C R?
I was gonna say, the D C R grant was sixty-five thousand?
Sixty-two thousand, five hundred. And that's for the first year's salary and any training opportunities that they're able to.
I thought it was staggered, where first year was a hundred percent and the next year was a little less.
Yeah, yeah, so the first year is basically, that would be the salary.
So they give it in chunks?
They give it in chunks, they, you have to reapply every year.
Oh.
Well, that's not, that's not fair, I just, so basically you have the certificated grant, but you have to submit your reports every year in order to have the funding for the upcoming year. And it does tier down after that. So you're in the program, but you still need to make sure you're following the program guidelines and you're gonna get the funding.
So the first year, the person's in U P M C, sixty-two thousand?
So the two thousand five hundred dollars, I believe, is for training. So the consensus between Shrewsbury Township and U P M C, they'll look to start someone around sixty-two thousand.
This is the salary and training. And then where does the three dollar and fifty cents per capita tax come in? Where, where does that money go to?
That would go to funding the program initially to, for startup. So if there's any expenses to get programming and events going, that money would go into the newly formed Recreation Commission as, as funded. And that can be adjusted as we move further in the project. Obviously, the hope is, at some point, the commission becomes self-sustaining and that per capita charge could drop or.
How is that per capita tax being received? How are we getting it from the citizen?
And is it legal?
Absolutely.
Okay, I'm just, I know there's.
You really shouldn't, really shouldn't call it a tax, it's just a per capita contribution. So you're looking.
It's a tax.
When you're not.
Yeah, I don't wanna contribute.
Well, you, you, we always had a ten dollar per capita tax, didn't we?
No, that, that's a tax. This is just a line item in your budget that you're funding based on the population or the per capita in New Freedom Borough at the time.
How do they get billed?
Who?
So it's not coming straight from the person, it's coming out of our budget. I was gonna, I was gonna ask, well, wonder if I don't wanna pay it. But you're not taking it directly from me, you're scooping in to the general fund and just taking it from there.
And so it's Shrewsbury Township, right?
Right, which is, I, can you tell me how that's different from other, the, any other expense line item?
I was just wondering, because like we go in and pay the tax later at the community center and you give, you give them right there. So I didn't know how you were gonna get this three fifty, is this three fifty being added in somewhere? Where is it being added in to get to me?
When you say to get to you, it's part of the general real estate tax measure. It's part of the revenues of the borough that's being paid out as an expense to the Recreation Commission. So whether it's earned income tax, whether it's leases, whether it's real estate tax, any part of the borough's revenue is being used to fund that, just like ninety-nine percent of the other.
So is that part of the driver that you came up with, the half percent millage increase that's in there?
It is, it, absolutely.
Okay. And that would be a tax.
But then everything is, you can look at every single line item in your budget and say it's a tax, correct? Because what funds the budget? What funds the entire general fund budget?
Your citizens.
The taxes, whether it's earned income tax or whether it's real estate tax.
My taxes pay for the camera and the fire.
Charges for services. Every line item is funded by tax dollars.
So it's a tax.
It's a tax. It's part of our power taxes. Part of our taxes, yeah. I had a sheet here and it tells you what you'll call what when it comes to taxes. Whether it's a fee or a tax.
We don't, we don't need to do that. Okay, um, are there any other questions on the managers report?
Andy. Andy.
I'm sorry?
Can I ask something?
Oh, sure.
Did I understand, I'm a little, little confused. But that's cool. Is our millage rate going up over this per capita tax?
Not over the per capita tax, no.
So is our millage rate going up at all?
Our, well, that's to be determined, right, correctly, the stated, the current bud, the current budget as proposed has a point five mil tax increase. It's a large tax increase and.
Point five mils, point five?
Point five.
Point five. That's a nasty tax increase. That's a very nasty tax increase.
Um, how much of the Glen Rock case budget do we have to pick up?
This is a twenty-five percent tax increase. Did the people know this?
We don't even know.
We don't even know, we just.
Well, if it goes up, if it goes up point five, it's twenty-five, twenty-five percent.
That's correct.
That's correct.
Yeah.
My house is a third the size of my son's and he lives up by Harry Hills and my taxes are double his. How is that possible?
What's the breakout of the school tax for him versus us?
I have no idea, but it's, what, the tax, total tax in general.
Okay, but, but it's just not.
But you have to look at municipal tax, our municipal tax, for, you know, as an example, our, my tax bill is somewhere over six thousand dollars. But the part that, that New Freedom Borough actually gets is like four hundred dollars. So we don't get everything that you see. The stuff, money that comes in goes to the school and it goes to.
Long Island?
County.
County, county and school. So the part that actually comes to New Freedom Borough is, is small, smaller than, than the, your total tax bill.
You asked school tax? In eighteen years, the school tax has went up twelve percent in eighteen years.
Okay.
We're going up twenty-five percent in one year.
Twenty-five percent in one year.
I understand.
I don't think you do.
And that's not.
You would be alarmed if you did.
We haven't voted on it.
You should be outraged if you did.
Well, again, again, we haven't reviewed the budget, but let me just, I mean, I, I tried to go through to get my head around this, okay? And in twenty eighteen, our, our ta, our taxes were three fifty-three per home. With this, with the, in twenty twenty-three, our taxes are four fifteen per home. So the tax delta was a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. We chart, that's what we pay more. You came here in twenty eighteen, you paid a hundred and sixteen dollars less than you're paying now. The police increase to the budget was two hu, two hundred and four thousand dollars. So our tax increase was a hundred and sixteen, but the police budget went up two hundred and four. Per month, per year, so I'm sorry, that's per, that's a hundred thousand dollars. So a hundred and six, a hundred and sixteen thousand was our taxes in twenty eighteen and, and police went up by two hundred thousand dollars. Fire went up by forty-five thousand, ambulance went up by twenty-three thousand. So our taxes, if you look at the, the half mil increase, which, again, I understand your concern, I share it. But the tax increase at half a mil puts our taxes at three hundred and ten thousand dollars. Of that, two hundred and seventy-two thousand is emergency services. The balance is just inflation and money that, you know, that we, that we would need. Yeah, we've got, well, you know, the per capita thing is, is.
Andy, I understand, but it's not just those things, it's all of this. It's fifty dollars an hour to push a broom. See, all these things add up and then at the end of the day, you're looking at a twenty-five percent increase in taxes. It's not just those things, some of those are quite unavoidable, unless you wanna cut back services.
I realize that.
I understand that too. But this is one, if twenty-five percent holds up, this is outrageous, actually. I don't think, I don't, I didn't know that, I tell you what. I can't imagine if people are awake, if they're awake. That's, that's crazy, that's crazy.
Yeah, and we have to dig in and look at the budget, that's what we have to do.
Over the last five years, our sister municipalities, Glen Rock, Stewartstown, Shrewsbury, and Railroad, their increase has been zero, the last five years, zero.
Who's come back on services is Glen Rock, correct?
That's prior to this even happening, zero.
The highest of all, they're what, three point eight five?
They provide less than New Freedom Borough.
Well, I have a question, I might be moving on, but I'm questioning an employment agreement that is on the agenda for Andrew.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, we already said we were gonna talk about that later.
It affects the budget. You're talking about raising the taxes and I'm looking at this going, really? I think I know, you know, where some of the expense is going, this is, this is out of control. What, a, a five thousand dollar floor sweeper and you're raising the taxes? What, a $5,000 floor sweeper and you're raising the taxes? $50 to push a broom? I don't understand. But this, this is outrageous. This, I... Who threw this up? Andy? Did you?
Me?
Yeah.
No. This, the budget reflects what the borough manager feels is required to get us through the next year and into the future. Borough council needs to review the budget and make a determination as to what we want to do with it. You're absolutely right. We could, we could cut, cut things here and there, we could do other things, but it still has to be reviewed. Probably ain't gonna happen tonight.
No, but if this is included in that budget packet you receive, then, you know, a car, an extra $2,000 a year, a six-month severance package? I mean, an annual cost of living increases shall be equal to or greater than the average cost of living increase for all employees? And, you know, in addition, you may not reduce this. I'm shocked. Yes, I would love to have this contract, but I don't want to pay for it. And if this is in that budget, this is a travesty. Oh, and you can award him a bonus? Sure, jack my taxes up again and let's put this in there. This is unreal.
Who did write that agreement?
It was drafted based on other municipal manager contracts and was reviewed by solicitors.
Who wrote it?
It was, I drafted part of it and the rest was drafted by solicitors.
You were writing your own income.
Right, no.
No!
Andy didn't write it.
You don't, you don't under... No, that is not true, because he can write whatever he wants. He could write a million dollars on there. It is up to council to decide to approve it or not.
But you all named me out and said no because we wanted to talk about it, so why?
And I just did again. Because we're talking about something else.
It's a budget.
No, and you've already said you're gonna have a special meeting for the budget, so let's not go there.
They didn't say that.
Andy did. Andy's already picking a date for the budget.
At this rate, at almost 10:30?
Yeah. And we patiently waited while you talked about every little thing that nobody in here was really sitting here for.
Pickleball.
Yeah, let's not bring it up. I mean, you know, let's go over. I understood, you don't need to.
What do you want to talk about tonight that I'm not gonna talk about?
The employment agreement right now.
That's next. I mean, it's literally...
All right, I brought it up and Ryan says that's later. Okay, how much later?
It is later.
Later is next.
It's in like five minutes later.
Yeah, but the perception was that it was not gonna be done tonight.
Oh, no, no.
But it was never asked to be tabled.
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
I'm sorry, I'm just saying what your perception is being addressed, like flooded out to us. That was the perception we all...
How was that?
No, no, I don't think, we're not gonna be able to talk about the budget tonight, but...
I'm trying to understand, so we can have a different perception if you need the information.
Well, they've got the same perception as well, so apparently it's...
We never go to the table with them.
I'm sorry.
I just wondered, because we know what a .5 mil increase equates to on every $100,000 assessment. Do you have that?
Yes.
Sort of put it into...
Your taxes on an average house in New Freedom would go up basically $104, $104.
And what is the average assessment then? $2.07.
Yeah, $2.07.
You talked about policing up $100,000. What timeframe were you referencing?
I'm sorry, yeah?
When you talked about policing going up, what timeframe were you referencing?
2018 to this year.
But if any of the, if, if that .5 is the, I'm guessing that's a work number now?
A what?
A working number?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Right, okay. So if .5 is a working number right now, what does that comprise? You must have, you must be, he fell behind it.
Well, that's what this is.
Well, exactly.
Yeah, we have a gun to read it.
At the very least, what are the key drivers between a...
Well, the key drivers are the police department budget, which is going up. I mean, it went up 11% last year. It's going up another...
50. It's projected maybe 56.
56, yeah. Well, in this budget, it's 70. But yeah, it's gonna, yeah, you're right. It would be, the budget we just got, it's lower than what was projected. So, and there's 45K in fire and 23 in ambulance. And then there's, we need, again, we actually do...
23 in ambulance?
Are we doing that as a tax?
I haven't decided. I mean, in my mind, huh?
An EMS tax?
I don't know. Right now...
I don't know.
We're nowhere near this. We keep talking in circles. We could have done so much more of this hours ago.
Yeah. Why don't we get, go ahead, Jeff.
Just last thing, warning. That's this year, this is one year. This is last year's budget to this year. What are we looking at next year? Is that 29%? Is that 35%? This is, 25 in one year is shocking. That's it.
I, I, I understand and I agree 100%. It is shocking and it's something that we need to look at. There's all, and you know, I mean, the other thing too is when... You wanna talk about that service?
We're not on the budget.
That's, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Do you want a shocker? Over 18 years, it's went up 320% increase.
Over how many years?
18 years. We have went up 320%. 18 years.
You're talking about the millage.
Percentage of...
Yeah, I mean, you're right. If you look at it, percentages seems huge, but if you look at it at the fact that it's 500 bucks.
Right.
Still not happy about it, but it 500 bucks sounds a lot different than however many percent.
I understand, but if it keeps happening, you're gonna, you'd be out of control pretty quick.
Are nowhere close. Nowhere close in this trajectory.
Increase or...
We are the 10th highest out of the 36 boroughs. In York County, we are the 10th highest out of the 36 at rate increases in the last five years.
Do they have the same services that we have?
I would think that they would have comparable services.
Well, if you're gonna compare apples to apples, I want to know that...
I had this chart made for me. I'm going off what the chart says.
Okay, but I want to know if they have the same services.
I guess you...
We're talking in circles again.
Yeah.
I don't even remember the last thing we were talking about. I was the manager's reporter.
Well, let's finish up the manager's report. Does anyone have any specific questions on the manager's report?
On the manager's report, that's the home enforcement.
Well, isn't that a part of the manager? So I...
On this one, sorry.
Okay. Okay, we already talked about the... That brings us to the employment agreement.
So I make a motion to reject consideration of this employment agreement until at least the reorganization meeting in January of '24.
One second. Motion in a second to table this agreement until the reorg meeting in January. Any other discussion?
Well, I guess we...
Can I ask a question? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Does he already have a contract? Doesn't he already have one? I mean, I thought that, no? He, he doesn't have a contract?
No.
I have down here, yes. I went back in minutes and in July of '22, Andrew said, I guess we need to go back and look at the contract then. And you're on personnel and you're on personnel and neither of you said no. There's no contract.
I was in that meeting.
As you know, when you reorg, you name your borough manager. You don't have to rename your outgoing borough manager.
No.
I think, I think that the reason that Andrew put this together was because he's concerned that in January, he'll be replaced. So he put this together to try to at least make it so that he has six months' notice. Now, when you talk about six months' severance pay...
How do you know that?
I can't...
How do you know that?
How do I know what?
What you just said.
Why would you have that thought if things were going good?
How do you know that?
How do you know you would be replaced?
Why would you put together a contract otherwise?
You said you had nothing to do with it.
But he did.
But you know, but you know why he did it.
Well, it's obvious why he did it.
Is it? It is now. It is now.
He asked me why. He wrote it on LinkedIn that everybody that's coming to the manager's... Excuse me. Excuse me. They wrote on LinkedIn that when a new council comes on, you better make sure that you have the proper contract with your borough that it's happening now before the new council can come in.
But he wants to hamstring whoever comes in. He wants to dictate to them.
Why now? I'm telling you, why not?
That is so unconscionable. That is totally...
Shouldn't the new council be the ones to do the...
I'm sorry.
Shouldn't the new council members be the ones to do the contract? I mean, it's October.
That's what she said.
Yeah.
And this wasn't even much like trying to fire the auditor. That wasn't requested by council. Council has not even spoken of this since, since July of '22, when Andrew said he had a contract. A contract has never been spoken again by this council. And then to have this come out of nowhere is egregious.
I don't think so. He's trying to protect himself and his family.
Protect himself at the expense of the taxpayers of the borough?
Doesn't have to be at the expense of the taxpayers. I mean, instead of, you know, you don't have to do, you don't have to do a... I mean, we haven't talked about this yet, so it's really kind of hard.
It's a one-sided contract.
Well, but you don't have to agree to every point of the contract. I'm looking at this and there are things in here, you know, that might be changed, but the bottom line is that he's asking you, I mean, you don't have to give severance pay as an example. You could just say you will continue to work for six, we will give you six months' notice or three months' notice or whatever you decide to do.
We already have a chapter 30. It details all of a borough manager. There's no need for a contract when you have the chapter 30.
There's no guarantee of employment either.
What happened at will? What happened to at will? All right, you serve at the will of the council.
Period.
Period, okay? And it's not, it's not guaranteed. The council's gonna remain the same come January. Why would you want to even think of hamstringing the incoming council? That's just, that is so... I can't, I just...
My thoughts and perception...
Oh, that's true.
My thoughts and perception is... When you write an agreement yourself, you need to do it in an ethical...
I said, I make a motion to reject consideration.
Until January.
Until January.
It's the same thing. I'm sorry.
I don't want the word "tabling." I want to reject.
The motion is tabling till the...
No, it's rejected.
According to...
She's saying that she wants to reject it until January.
Outright until January.
That's the motion currently.
My thoughts on this is if you write your own agreement and you work for the people and for the community, you write it in an ethical manner. This is an unethical agreement contract. And I'm sorry, but that shows to me that he's not ethical in his position. That's my opinion.
How can you say that?
Because you're gonna tell me that that agreement is ethical?
So, so what research have you done about municipal manager contracts across the nation? Or in Pennsylvania?
How do you know what my job is? How do you know what my job is?
Because you sat here and said what your job is.
Right, and how do you know that I'm not doing this or I didn't do any research?
Okay, so what examples do you have that that is unethical? How is that unethical?
Contractual agreements are one to two months, not six.
Not even close.
Really? Prove it. You proved it.
Well, absolutely prove it.
Okay, so tell me who has a contractual agreement for six months that's paid for by the community?
They are across the nation. Whether it's a city, a town, a borough.
This isn't a $40,000 citizen city. This is a two-square-mile New Freedom Borough. Okay, and if that solicitor blessed this, he's supposed to be working for the borough and the citizens.
My only point is I'm not, I don't appreciate being called unethical.
Then you should have thought about it before you wrote that contract.
Yes.
Okay, there's a motion to reject it until reorganization. So I'm not even sure why there's still discussion.
I agree.
This world, how to have discussion?
Five-minute recess.
Five-minute recess. I have to go to the bathroom.
Oh, now, yeah, you left me.
Run the long stretch, come on.
Frank, what are we gonna do? Are you leaving? Yeah. You need a hand? Can we help you out?
I'm probably...
Sure?
To me, the problem is I cannot say... They come and they discuss things amongst yourselves. They're not looking on here. They should just be coming in.
They tell you bring your pillow on back?
Yeah.
Come on now.
Right.
Uh, it was on the back. Yeah, it's kind of...
I'm going home.
I don't believe in this.
The worker's estate is a two-year... So it shouldn't be designed to be very...
Yeah, they detail all of what it's... Yeah, usually contracts a little bit more... Yeah. headers.
You're right. You're probably right. You would have, you would have a bunch of other problems. You know?
I don't have to rake their doors after you. I'm sorry. Did you get out of here?
Be careful, Ray.
Well, absolutely.
High five.
It is. Um...
Because I had you talking.
That's why I had to... Yeah. I told Washington because it's a letter in the museum. It was out. I told her, we're not going to do this later. But that's the nature. And I don't know why. We had the... We held up for...
Yeah, I did too.
Make the... Come in this. Remember that, William, which we had a time?
But someone else... This is cheating.
Yes. Yeah. I think I remember the money.
Do you remember?
Yeah. Both have been to Washington. But the ones that happened in...
Okay, we're back. Uh-oh. We have a motion and a second to reject the employment agreement until the new council is seated January 1st. Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Vows?
No.
I vow this now, so...
Well, I make a motion to table this till our November 13th meeting then to allow adequate time to go through this because I was given this packet Thursday evening. I only had Friday and part of today. And then we had 155 pages to go through.
You have a motion that we table this until November 13th?
Until next scheduled November 13th meeting.
Would you modify that to include other municipalities in your panel? Other contract... Copies of the contract?
I'm just... You can do whatever you want to do. I... My motion is to table this. It's late till the next November scheduled meeting, the 13th. Give time for myself to go through this. I was up, I don't know how long. I've taken some of my weekend time away. I've been very busy to go through this as thoroughly as it needs to be gone through. That is my motion. And I don't see the urgency in this.
Motion?
I'll second that.
I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Vows? My vote is aye. I have nothing. Yet anything. Who's going to report on the police?
Yeah. Are we not doing the budgets in here?
Uh, no. We're going to go... We're going to circle back and grab a continuation.
Yeah, so just quickly. The operating budget came out. New Freedom, 762,976. Dollar percent changes, 56,629. This does not include budget for any capital expenditures. The 23 capital expenditures came out of reserves. It's not set in stone. This is the budget, but this is a very good working document to go forward with.
They don't have some capital expenditure?
Yes.
What was... What'd you ask, Ryan? I'm sorry.
Is that where the capital expenditures have come out before? Yes. So for the police commission, if we want to go on... Is there anything about this?
I just have one quick question.
Sure.
Are they recommending, like, adding, what, 5%? To use as a budget figure or...
It's not set in stone. It's very close. But of course, you don't have those things that come into year end. So, you know, I think whether we put 70...
You got 770?
Seven... Seven... Well, 70,000. This is 56. You know, you could take it to 65, keep it at 70, but...
Whoa, 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 I'm sorry.
The dollar change.
How the dollar change?
How the dollar change? Oh, that's... I'm sorry. I look at the dollar change. Let me go back over here. The 762, you have the 770. I would just leave that there.
Leave the 770?
I would for now. Maybe Gail got some things in by this next meeting and I can report something different.
Has the negotiation with the police officers?
The contract has went to the labor attorneys.
So they felt pretty confident?
Yes.
That's great.
It's going well. Officer Hefner went out. There was a letter given for Officer Hefner. A lady came home. Her alarm had been going off. Her alarm company said it was fine. She went in, she was very unsure, unsafe. She came out of station. Officer Hefner came down, cleared her home for her. She gave a very nice letter of thankfulness that he took the time to go out there, help her reset her alarm, reboot the system. Just a great example of the type of officers we have here. There's going to be a 7.8% increase for the school districts in what they pay for their contract. We got 133,000 in state commission aid that will be sent off to PMRS. Like I said earlier, Chief was in Stewartstown with a rental ordinance. Talking to them about how important it is for that. September 15th to 17th was a very busy... There was a major domestic in Stewartstown. I think they chased him... Oh, my goodness. Chased him all over the place. I had... There was a suicide locally here. There was a stalker. They used stop sticks twice within, like, 24 hours. They haven't used those in years. They had two separate incidences using the stop sticks.
Suicide was in town?
I don't know if it was in Stewartstown. I know they had the OD. There was a... That's here, OD in Stewartstown during that time. I don't recall if the suicide was also in Stewartstown.
No, much of it is.
Yeah.
The psychiatrists.
Let's see. In 2022, there was a retail theft of a John Deere, stole a generator. They were able to tie that to a theft at Giant. Those people are now in jail, now facing charges. And we're filing charges that will go right behind that. There was a domestic in Shrewsbury. That would have been the first Wednesday of the month, earlier before the meeting. It was a barricaded situation. The person was taken to the hospital, had a gun. So it was really a tense time through second week of September. That was it. So I don't know. Do we approve the budget for the commission? Do we say anything to them back or just...
No, we don't have the whole thing yet, right?
Have the whole thing, but...
Yeah. I don't know that we approved the top level summary, although I guess tacitly we're going to approve it.
Well, I guess we should wait, I guess, because it's not the closer numbers that Gail should have than... I guess we'll just...
We realize it's already included. Has been scheduled in the budget, but because it's not on tonight's agenda and it involves the signature of...
Engineers' report. Questions or comments? Water report. Water purchase higher than what's... That's one?
Uh, it might be a little higher, but we're usually around 1,000 gallons.
Wastewater treatment? How often do you have the wastewater treatment sewer needed? Expansions?
Well, for everything that's been going on, hopefully quite a lot.
Well, I mean, Andy reported in the manager's report about the last one. That was an interesting one, actually. But, yeah, the... It's kind of an as-needed. When they have information or they have questions, we're trying to work with them to... But I mean, basically, and just for the record, I mean, we have told them that we, you know, we... After this upgrade that we're currently doing, the aeration and whatnot, then that is... We're done. So if a municipality like Hopewell or Newbury Township needs additional capacity, that would be something that they would have to pay for and upgrade the plan. So they have to decide if they want to spend the money to do that.
And we've gotten all the complications of who has how many EDUs straightened out.
Yeah. Well, yeah, to our satisfaction.
Did you... Truance has that?
Yeah, to the Shrewsbury boroughs and Newbury boroughs' satisfaction, I think. I think we can say yes, right?
Yes.
After the last sewer meeting, it was confirmed that I would be told about the next sewer meeting. That didn't happen because you just had a meeting.
Oh, apologize? Yeah, you did.
Okay. So the next sewer meeting, I'll be notified before the next sewer meeting?
Yeah. I'll make sure.
Could you... Why don't you just let everybody know?
Yeah, I could do that.
To me, you have to let everybody know.
Yeah, I'll send you a name. I don't anticipate you that it'll be... Probably it'll be next year, I hope, yes.
Yeah, the engineers already started, but they were going to make this mission a DEP. That's the last one.
Yes. For the... Oh, okay.
For phase one improvements.
But that's not a meeting. It's just a... A story. Okay.
Dude, I do just want to point out, I know John mentioned it at the bottom of his report here, and thanked Public Works and wastewater staff for working until almost, actually, past 3:00 in the morning to replace a collapsed and damaged sewer lateral. So that's cooperation from both departments.
Was that due to storm?
No.
Oh. Normal weather?
What caused that was excavation at one point in time that we were... That actually damaged that lateral in the street.
Excavation by us or by somebody else?
By contractor.
Will you go for it?
We have just, based on that repair, we have almost $15,000 in expenses for that on the sewer lateral. That sewer lateral is about eight inches below the water main. And when the water main was replaced, it was clear that that pipe was hit and not... So we are going...
How long ago was that?
We're going back after the contractor...
Okay.
From the Franklin Main and Constitution Water and Sewer Project.
Does that have anything to do with that lady that came on the corner?
No. The other end.
Permit report.
Let me go back to sewer a minute and permit report. We've got 37 houses going in. They're planning on opening it up in Concord. Don't we have... Is that a sewer? Sewer or water meter up there or something?
That's not on Concord. You're talking about the connection to River?
Is that where it is?
It's not on Concord. It's up on Washington at the end.
Okay, I thought it was...
Yeah.
On Concord. We aren't going to have to move that or anything? Because that's right before you get to the woods.
Well, the proposed development does not impact that section of that development. It only comes off of Concord.
Where are they getting their water from?
From here.
They would get the water from, I believe, again, all we saw was a preliminary plan. But they would tie into the borough's water system.
So they're not tying into the York water main that we're looking to do away with and strapped to that because now these homes are tied into it? Oh, no, no.
No, no, no. It would tie... It would loop into our system, not into the York water system.
When he was here before, he said that he was tying in to York water, that that whole development was going to be on York water.
I think he was talking about the other side of the street. I think I remember what you were talking about. He was talking about this.
Was that Shrewsbury Township?
That's still our connection.
Yeah, it's divided by the road. And before, he was building in New Freedom and Shrewsbury. So I think the Shrewsbury side is going to be York water. But I don't even know if he's building in Shrewsbury.
He sat in here and said he was tying into York water. And why he would say that to New Freedom when he was asking about, you know...
Does that mean that... Is it in Washington? Is that where it is? Does that feed both New Freedom and the township? I thought that was dedicated to New Freedom.
No, it doesn't go to the township.
It doesn't go to the township.
I'm sorry?
That's where we get our 900,000 from, right from there. And then the meter shuts off every day.
But does that feed just us? Is that just us, Dennis?
Yeah, there are.
Because there's a meter on there, so 900,000 goes... And it shuts off every day.
From York water.
Or not?
No, 30,000.
30,000, but I mean...
Well, my point is, he could... On the other side, for the township development, he could not get water from there. From the York water feed. Because it's not township.
Yeah, he could.
I don't... That would be a determination between him and Shrewsbury Township. I mean, if it's occurring in Shrewsbury Township, we wouldn't have anything to do with that. I mean, our meter would still be within New Freedom Borough. So whatever happens upstream...
They would do another meter upstream.
That's correct, yeah. Again, we don't even... Again, we don't even...
Do we have that condition at all right now?
There is no plan, there, there was a plan...
Does anyone in New Freedom get exclusively York water?
No, no, it's...
Mixes.
Depends how close you are to the connection.
Well, yeah, but it mixes in the system.
Keep out of the drops, maybe. Well, now, um, oh, Campbell.
I didn't, we served that by sewer, along with church.
Water under strawberry field?
No.
No.
York under strawberry field.
Yeah, okay, so anything he puts over in Shrewsbury Township would have to come from York water.
That's correct.
But he asked to give New Freedom Borough water from New Freedom, same as EDU, so he was powering the E D U's for New Freedom, and I have a feeling that's why he hasn't done anything for development in Shrewsbury Township, because Shrewsbury ain't giving him no more E D U's, it took him four years to get eleven or something.
I have a question on the code enforcement.
Code enforcement, yeah.
Twenty-three Gen Reno, I thought we went through this chicken thing with him before.
I did too.
He had taken him out and moved, now there's another one.
There was a complaint received from the neighbor that they were out again, so...
Really? I'll have to take a walk right there, there's a, there's another one on South Shakerdale, I have to see if they're still there. All right, yeah, cause I thought we went through that already.
Is there any order that says it has to be in a coop twenty-five feet from the rear of the house on the crack?
There's a lot of size required.
So much area.
Yeah, but it's still twenty-five?
I think it's a minimum of twenty-five, there's also other stipulations where it hits a hundred feet.
And no roosters? Right? I'm catching you, I doubt you don't have a roof in front of you, but I think that's what it is.
So, kinda stuff today on, uh, Hopewell, about chickens.
Okay, I have a question, another question. Uh, very last one, very bottom of the code enforcement report. Those folks got a letter for property because they were violating P A vehicle code. Again, for parking vehicles on the sidewalk. I haven't been asked, why hasn't the guy on North Constitution?
That is the house on North Constitution, but his address, his address is forty-eight East Franklin.
Garage is on the back.
Garage spaces North Constitution.
There, yeah, but the other one is down farther, that we talked about, the black Mercedes. And now he's got a pickup truck that sticks out even farther, that was our original complaint.
This one was... They said last month was because it was blocking the sidewalk.
Yes.
That Mercedes is always in the driveway.
No, it's not.
You can't park on that curb, that curb is pretty tall.
People keep, people are going in the middle of the road and cars are coming down and going on the other side of the road.
This one was, based on the complaint, uh, we thought that this was the one. Only said North Constitution Avenue and, and a vehicle parking on the sidewalk.
That one, I mean, that is a bad one, that's, but there's another one.
Blocking the sidewalk, if there's another one, then we will send the same letter. So what is the address of the other one?
One fourteen...
I think Danny has it.
One fourteen North Constitution, that's, yeah, I think...
And again, the letter is just basically informing them...
That was the major complaint that started that.
The letter is just informing them that it's a violation of the P O, P A vehicle code. If there's additional complaints or if the situation continues, it'll be enforced by Southern Region Police Department.
Would you send another letter to that other address? Look, you can easily look up who it is.
You said one fourteen?
Yeah.
Yeah, again, it's a...
One fourteen needs one and I'm gonna talk to Chief about it because somebody's gonna get hurt.
I did already talk to Chief and me, cause he helped me with the section of the vehicle code. So we talked about the situation, we talked that we're just gonna send a nice letter, asking them to stop doing it, that it's a such a safety concern. But if it continues, it'll be enforced, so...
There you go, yeah, if you would please do that, we've gotten several complaints about that. Okay? Some additional land development, we know some good, most of the stuff tonight, yeah? The thirty-seven lot, uh, he, he doesn't even, he doesn't have to go to zoning, right? He's all completely within the zone.
At this time, unless he comes back and changes something?
Changes something, huh? Okay, I'll just fire that through.
Okay? Anything else?
Yeah, um, um, there was, uh, two hundred and nineteen dollars raised by Casey, Tony and Danny Cummings, um, from businesses in and around the New Freedom area, that was donated back to REC. Um, Farmers Market, there was no update, there was somebody who had expressed some interest, um, about the possibility of getting that back up and going. Um, a big thank you to the Borough, uh, Public Works for getting the lights fixed, that marked with the park on the stage, those were the ones that were, I think, said they were. Uh, so thank you for that. Um, unfortunately, City Council was canceled due to weather. Um, uh, Veterans Day Dinner, uh, Veterans Day Dinner will be held on November ninth at the community center from six to nine P M. Um, donations are currently being settled, uh, solicited, excuse me. Um, and as you mentioned earlier, there, there will be a one-hundred-and-one-year-old World War Two and Korean War veteran, um, will be in attendance. And just some other comments about the feasibility study, uh, but again, that, um, survey should be going out here at the end of the month. Uh, so it's pretty good, went through one, two divisions, I think one real, one piece of...
There's only a change to the one question.
To the one question, yeah, um, oh yeah, I guess it was, uh, eliminating some of the other redundant...
It's really good, I mean, it's open-ended enough that people can put whatever they want.
Um, so that'll be coming out, uh, SAV Citizen, uh, website and newsletter. So, thank you.
We've already covered EMS and fire, um, anything on infrastructure?
You know, actually, I do have, it's not the borough infrastructure, but the, I don't ever remember seeing a permit for, um, the post office.
Oh, I don't know.
The roof replacement of the post office.
Well, it's, it's, it's the same materials, it doesn't... Give it, they're changing materials or changing structure.
What they were taking off looked like it was simple, but maybe it's just...
And you want, we look into the stop and show or whatever?
Yeah, yeah, and again, like I mentioned, um, to the resident, we've had written communications since there has been some concern about the property and, uh, he invited Wade in, they walked through the whole, the whole building, obviously, there's been something that changed since that point. We need to have a follow-up conversation.
If you're dropping a Maserati, why do you have to sleep at the stop?
Cause you're driving Maserati?
I'll, I'll answer that for you off camera.
Okay, all right.
I have a pretty good suspicion.
Yeah, you probably both have the same.
I would guess. Uh, how's everyone look for the twenty-fifth or a continuation?
I'm sorry, wait. I, I've got a lot of work and I'm gonna be traveling. I'm asking for twenty minutes, twenty minutes, let's just do revenues and then at the next meeting, please put this at the top. I don't have many questions on revenues, my questions are over here in expenditures. I think we can at least get revenues knocked out right now, twenty minutes or less be done, and then please put this at the top.
It's all over the clock.
On November, twenty more minutes, we're already all here.
I'm asking for a continuation.
I've got traveling, I have work, twenty minutes.
I already need all the...
We can gobble. I'm asking twenty minutes.
I have a motion for a continuation.
Have a motion for a continuation, you have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No. Motion carries.
Okay, so when did you say?
Uh, twenty-fifth.
What time?
Seven, six, I guess six, let's make it six, it started early, maybe get done by two or three.
It said six o'clock.
Yeah, six o'clock on the twenty-fifth, that works for everybody. Yeah. Anybody?
Anybody what?
Twenty-fifth, six o'clock.
What else?
November second?
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, you can't do the twenty-fifth of October?
There is a REC council meeting that night.
And if you can't do that, what time is that?
There's three of you, what do we even have?
Twenty minutes.
Yeah.
That would bring us, put them in the back.
I mean, we, I'm, I'm just benching it, I'm not saying...
November sixth. So what, what are we looking at?
November eighth at the soonest.
We really, we really...
November eighth, now we almost have a, a meeting the next...
Yeah, we really...
But it separates the times, you know, you don't need a time just for that.
Just for buzzer.
And it's difficult to get the schedule right.
It, it is, when we could just go through every is right now. You know, and put this at the top so it's not at the bottom, so we get this taken care of out the gate in our November meeting. Anybody that didn't get to look at their budget, it gives them some...
Already, already motioned.
Yeah. Gives them some time, well, I can make another motion if it's an agreement.
Somebody quick, make a motion to adjourn. So what are, what are we saying, we're not gonna do anything until meeting on the thirteenth?
My, I, sorry, my work, but the schedule, everything, I'm gonna be here, West Virginia back, I'm taking people to airport, it's...
Good work.
It's a crazy, 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 crazy time, so it could be at the earliest the eighth, but why come the eighth if we're gonna be here on the thirteenth?
I think just dividing the time is just a good thing to do, so we get just a constant on the...
Working on it.
The November eleventh.
How about they do like we used to do and start the budget right at six?
Yeah, I wonder why we didn't do that this year?
Well, because, because, yeah, and I, and I, yeah, we, we knew we had the public comment.
I, I can go five or six P M on November eighth.
Anybody else?
I can do that.
Anybody can?
I can, I can make...
Can we zoom Shrewsbury's council meeting at the same time?
That works for me.
Yeah, okay.
Can't do it yet. Oh my.
Ninth?
That's the Veterans Day.
That's the Veterans Day dinner.
Twenty minutes trying to decide.
Uh, I'm not available Friday.
All right, everybody, we're gonna do the thirteenth and I'm gonna tell you something, we're gonna, um, try to keep the agenda light because... And we're gonna start with budget.
Look at his, look at Kim's stack, look at the stack of papers, let's keep it light.
Speaking of stack of papers, um, Andrew and I talked about this, do you want a motion for I P S? As, as an option, I'm not saying exclusively.
Can we talk about that first?
Yeah, we'll, yeah, we'll talk, yeah, we'll talk about it, why don't you put it on the agenda and we'll talk about it? I, I, I don't think we can, I don't think we can make...
I made the motion to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn, I have a second.
All third.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, I'm supposed to be up in three hours, I'm supposed to be getting...